Live.
Good, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven thirty eight P M. First, I'll begin with the roll call. Vice Chair Testman.
As a.
Commissioner Aliff has already sent an email that he will not be attending. Commissioner Goodman?
Present.
Commissioner Lambert.
Present.
Commissioner Mather. Commissioner Mather not present. Commissioner Smith? I would like to entertain a motion that we excuse Commissioner Mather and perhaps any discussion on that. Did we? From the staff, did we get his email straightened out or not?
I would have to double check on that council member or excuse me, Commissioner. Or excuse me, Chair, I I I did put a request in that everybody had the same information. So if you weren't receiving your emails through the city emails. System that there was an opportunity to go back in and change your password. Or or seek further I T help.
All right, well. I did not send to his personal address. The invite because I thought he had that sorted out. So in light of that, I'd move that we excuse Commissioner Mather. Can I give a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
And we'll follow up with that. Let's proceed to agenda approval. I move that we approve today's agenda as written. Can I get a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? And now we need to approve the minutes. We've got two planning commissions worth of minutes to approve. I'd like to do them one at a time. So I first move that we approve the October third, twenty twenty two planning commission minutes as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No, hearing none. I'd ask that all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, and I move that we approve on each mission minutes dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. That asked for a vote to approve the October seventeen twenty twenty two minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Good. Okay, moving on to the next. Agenda item, I don't remember too, housing needs assessment presentation.
Yes, Chair, we have a speaker today. His name is Todd Chase. He is the principal economist. For F C S group, F C S group was hired by the city recently to perform parts of our housing element. Including a housing needs analysis, or otherwise known as housing needs assessment. So without further ado. Todd, would you like to go ahead and begin your PowerPoint presentation?
There we go. Thank you all for inviting me to present some of the draft findings tonight and with me. From our team is Tim Wood on the phone and Matt Matt Cover from L D C. And so both Tim and Matt are available for when we talk about next steps and follow up questions. So. What we've been working on is a regional housing needs assessment. For Snoqualmie, Duval, North Bend and Carnation. So a lot of the findings in the report anyway reflect not only. Your city, but some of the adjacent cities as well. And. You're on probably a six year rotation when you update your comprehensive plan. And your capital facilities plans and all that. And so really the housing needs assessment is the first step. To revisiting some of your other guiding documents that the city uses for long range planning. And so tonight, we're just going to touch base on the the purpose of the housing needs assessment. Share some draft findings. Identify some policy considerations and have some discussion. And this discussion will continue into the next phase of work, which will be actually a housing action plan. The housing needs assessment includes four primary objectives. One is to evaluate. Current housing needs for the city and we go out twenty years to do that analysis. Of housing needs. And this is used to inform your housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, which will be on the heels of this work. The update to that chapter. It informs the community about housing needs for households at different income levels. And also different types of housing for the community over over time that would be in line with what we feel the market. Need is evolving to require. And because you revisit these types of studies every six years, you do your best with the information we have available. And then you come back in, you know, six plus years to update some of the findings. The information will help you and other elected officials in assigning priorities and resources to meet housing needs in the community. Those become part of objectives and goals that can be embodied in your comprehensive plan. Which is the next step. And it becomes a guide for the community to adopt appropriate programs, policies, strategies. Code or zoning map changes, things of that sort come out of this type of work. In a quick overview of some of the findings. I didn't confirm it, but I'm pretty sure Snoqualmie is one of the fastest growing cities in the state of Washington. You've added about five thousand, over five thousand four hundred people over the last decade or so. Population most recent count from Office of Financial Management, put the population at close to fourteen thousand five hundred people. It's probably in excess of that today. And while it's a fairly wealthy community by most standards. About one in five households are considered to be low or very low income by HUD standards. And that is at eighty percent of the area median income to qualify as low income. In King County, that equates to a hundred and eight thousand dollars per year or less for the average family. So it's not necessarily. What I would consider to be low nationally, but it is, it is, does account for one in five households in the city of Snoqualmie. To meet that criteria. Your median home prices in the region were the highest that we saw in the four cities I mentioned. At over one point one million. Per home. That was in August. That was the latest data we could gather. And it was down from July where it peaked. I believe close to one point two million. Vacancy rates are pretty much at very low levels. And. Only one percent of the renter households were considered to be severely rent burdened. According to the twenty twenty census data that we could obtain. And that was the lowest we've seen in in all four cities in the region. And what that means is severely rent burden is a condition where the households are paying over half of their income on rent. And first of all, there's not that many renter housing units in the city of Snoqualmie. So that might be, that might be. You know, working its way into this one percent number. And the rents that we did see in the existing units were relatively low compared to some of the other communities in the region. So. That is, that's, it'd be nice if we can keep it down in the future. But that's one of the lowest renter household burden numbers we've seen. Um. The King County did a housing capacity analysis about a year ago. And using that information and updating it the best we could, it concluded that the city. Has a shortfall in terms of meeting its target requirement of fifteen hundred units. Because you don't really have much vacant land left. And so the shortfall equates to about eleven hundred and twenty nine units. That the city should plan to accommodate over the next twenty years. And when we did our market analysis. We were able to kind of disaggregate that that demand number into detached housing demand. Of about twelve hundred ninety six units and then all other types of housing, about two hundred to ninety four to three hundred units. There's really insatiable demand for this this category of middle housing, which is basically everything other than detached homes. Which tends to bring in a lower price than the standard detached homes do from builders. And as I mentioned, this is some of the findings from the buildable land report. And basically concluded that about last year when this was conducted or two years ago now, coming up on two years. You only had fourteen point five acres of vacant buildable land. And I think this, the county was pretty generous in assuming that you'd get about a hundred and thirty nine units on one. High density zoned acre, which is really relatively high density and I'd be surprised if you get that. Without structured parking anyway. But at any rate, the conclusion at the time and based on the units in the pipeline of two hundred and four units. Showed a net housing deficit to meet the target of about eleven hundred and twenty nine units over twenty years. That's no surprise to, I believe, the city planners that we've been working with on the project. Because this has kind of been a situation for a number of years now, and the city's been growing so fast. I don't think you've had the time to really think about urban growth area alternatives and the cost of serving new areas around the city. Which would be the next step. Some of the findings and considerations that are included in the draft report. Basically include steps for exploring an urban growth area amendment. That would require, of course, the state's C P A process where you'd have to evaluate transportation. Other public facility needs versus the capacity of areas around the city to serve. Say twelve hundred plus additional dwelling units and all the environmental checklist that goes along with the C P A requirements. There typically would be state grant money to perform those studies. But having a a fresh housing needs assessment. And a follow up housing action plan would basically put you in front of the line, I think, to get some of those state grants to do that work. You can look at other locations for up zoning, some of the remaining low density land to medium or higher density zones. As part of the housing needs assessment, you can consider that the city's actually made some good progress already in adopting a cottage housing. Code and design standard with limits on parking. So you you've done some good things there. There are some other kind of code tweaks that you could consider as part of that, as part of that housing action plan. You could require, for example, a mix of dwelling units and any new planned unit development that the city would approve. And you don't necessarily have to require minimum densities, but by just requiring a mix. That would basically put the onus on the developer to provide some middle housing along with detached housing. In any new subdivision that gets reviewed and approved by the city. There's a few other things you can consider, talk about those probably during the next step of the work. But really, the next step will be this housing action plan component. And. That's going to be started in December. It's going to go into January and a little bit beyond. And that's going to be led by Matt at L D C, who's on the phone tonight. And and of course, as part of that work, there's community involvement. And then on as a follow up to that work are the comprehensive plan amendments for the housing element. And any related code changes you want to make. To to kind of lower the barrier to middle housing would be our recommendation. We don't have to get into all those categories of 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 actions that the city can consider. But you know, just to kind of whet your appetite, there's zoning and code changes. There's. There's kind of reducing some regulatory impediments through sometimes that's done through programmatic C P As. For planned action E I S locations around the city where preapproved units are already kind of allowed. Based on the C P A documents that get adopted. There's financial incentives that could be utilized to leverage more kind of lower, lower cost housing in the community. And that could include tax exemptions and abatements for some of that housing at that eighty percent level that I mentioned. If it's deed restricted. And of course, there's, you know, communities go all the way to direct partnerships where they might have surplus land holdings. Or they can work with another agency or a land trust in a nonprofit to deliver a different mix of housing in the future. And. You know, some of the middle housing examples we've seen around the region include townhomes. Cottages, sometimes in the cottage cluster, where several of these smaller cottage units usually. Thousand square feet or less are clustered around a common area. Accessory dwelling units could be added to some of the larger lots of single family detached homes. And of course apartments and mixed use. So I know, you know, Snoqualmie is a growing city. But you know, as you grow, these housing types are probably going to enter the mix at some point. So that was really all we had tonight. I'm happy to answer questions about the report or any of the findings.
Did. Commission open up for any questions? So hand up, I thought I saw hand up. Uh, committee Vice Chair Testman?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thanks for the presentation. A couple of questions in no particular order. Well, I guess the order would be I'm trying to go through. Your slide order. I guess one question is, you know, you highlighted. Basically, the target density that we would need slash the density planned to by King County. So one thirty nine. I guess is what King County is planning to. Is that right? You said?
Yeah, they they assumed in a high density zone that the capacity could be as high as a hundred and thirty nine units. On that acre.
Okay, so I I don't know, I'm probably just not reading it right, but I guess based off of what you saw, two questions would come to mind. One. What is Snoqualmie's average density right now? And then. Are you saying then that we'd have to hit one thirty nine in order to hit that twenty forty four target of fifteen hundred? With the fourteen point five acres of land available? Is is my understanding correct on all that?
Well, the targets really are intended to let communities know how much work they have to do to accommodate. Additional development capacity. And the targets are for jobs and they also have targets for housing. These target numbers are are considered to be averages and I don't. I didn't do the calculation, but I, on your current density is probably very, very low. It's probably. Five units per acre, I'm guessing.
Wow, okay.
You know, and you don't have much, really, much high density. You know, in terms of high density in in my mind, is something that would be, say, four, four stories, maybe five stories. Four over one would be pretty much as high a density as I would expect. And it's possible to do a hundred units an acre in that in that format. But then you typically need some kind of underground or below grade parking to accommodate that level of development.
Okay.
Markets, markets not there. At least today, we haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, that's a lot. So, for example, the apartments and such kind of clustered around Center Boulevard, for example. That wouldn't be high density. That would be, I guess, medium, given that it's two stories.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Interesting. And then I said, thank you for that. The second question I had was those fourteen point five acres, I'm assuming that's not consolidated. I guess where all in Snoqualmie is that? Because I have no idea.
Yeah, apparently there's about, at the time anyway, there were two. Seven acre sites. And I'm not sure whether that was combined or separate, but. And and there was two hundred and four units already planned. So for for those sites, they're probably already spoken for. So you really don't have much to work with inside the existing city limits. Or even urban growth area. So that's why, you know, expanding an urban growth area where you're, you know, you have lots of topography challenges. And other challenges is it's a, it's a tough road to home. It takes a lot of work, analysis. And you may not find it easy to get there for these, you know, twelve hundred units. But it's some analysis that needs to be done.
And so you're saying on this, on that fourteen point five, the two hundred and four units in the pipeline are basically already spoken for on that fourteen point five?
I believe most of that fourteen point five is spoken for.
Got it. Um, and not to hog it, but I guess, do we know is it? Is that fourteen point five blanket low density or blanket medium or mix at this point right now for zoning?
Yeah, it's it's about, you can see six point seven acres and very low.
Oh.
Six point seven and low and just one acre and high. So mostly very low density.
Gotcha. I read there. Okay, thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, I definitely have a couple of questions, but first, any other commissioners? See, and no.
I I do have a question, actually.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank, thank you very much for for joining us and for 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 the presentation. I guess I'm curious. You know, given that the vast majority of the city here is, you know, under a development agreement of some kind, you know. More is kind of set in stone with the with the ridge. And given the, you know, the size of the city and the, you know, the the kind of smaller. Smaller area that we have that that, you know, by which I mean downtown, that that's a bit more flexible in terms of the code. I'm just wondering. You know, in your experience, are there any particular strategies that have tended to work in a place like this or? Or or have kind of gotten more bang for your buck than than others?
Well. In the short term, there's not much you can do other than make it very easy for homeowners to add accessory dwelling units. And that can be done through some education. It it, there can be preapproved plans, there can be shadow plots as part of new. Subdivision approvals where you can show kind of the exact location where a future A N U would be added. Just to make it, you know, pretty clear for the homeowner that if they do want to come back in the future and add, add another unit. It's fairly, it's fairly streamlined at that point. And. And then, you know, that's about it. I mean, I I think then it's just a matter of going through the checklist, you know, the C P A checklist and try to find. A location that can be served with adequate sewer water roads that can be planned for. Some type of of mix of housing that would complement the city and not not detract from livability.
Yeah, if I can, if I can add to that, Todd, I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about with with staff for moving into the the housing action plan portion of this is. Whereas there there are a lot of, there are a lot of tools that are available to communities that are a lot less constrained, that just aren't necessarily super relevant for Snoqualmie. So we'll probably take the approach of, you know, instead of sketching out. Kind of a little bit broader approaches to like sixteen different things. We might do a deeper dive on like five or six and. A helpful part of this process so far was that. The city actually completed kind of a, using the categories that Todd had up on one of his slides for the types of actions that you can take. They kind of did a. A really quick rundown of, you know, there's, there's seven or eight different things in each of those categories that that are that are on the. The commerce guideline for the Department of Commerce guideline for this and and best practices that the F C S has identified. Staff, staff already kind of went through all those and kind of did a very, very quick, high level like. Yeah, this one's probably not going to do much for us. Oh, we could consider this. Oh, we've we've done a little bit of this, but we could do more. So we'll probably try and pick and choose. You know, a few really high value ones from there that can be accomplished and can maybe tee up some work in the comprehensive plan nicely. But you know, you're you're right in the sense that there, there are fewer, so a lot of the techniques that would be available for communities that have ample developable land. Are not, are not super relevant for you right now. So it's about building the record and it's about. Teeing yourself up for success in the comprehensive plan. And in addition to finding, you know, a a solid handful of more impactful changes that. Maybe don't need the co-plan amendment yet that we can, you can tackle in the next couple of years. So that's, that's kind of just kind of broadly the approach that we're taking because, you know, we we share your. We share your view as the staff that not all tools are going to be relevant to you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
I see that Commissioner Lambert has a hand up. Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there's either a TV or someone talking in the background and it is really distracting. If anybody could check. It stopped now, so. And then it's back on.
Yeah, I can hear it as well.
Somebody's got some background going on.
I I think it's the prices, right?
Well, did they win?
We're waiting.
All right. It, any other questions, Commissioner Lambert? Did you have anything to ask on the presentation?
I was gonna ask. So if this this next step, you'll be identif, like, will we identify potential of land that we could? You know, bring into the city in order to meet this goal. And then we're discussing like the codes that we could put in place to. Get this to a higher density so that we can actually, you know. Based on the the projections and the amount of buildable land we have left, this seems like a lost cause almost.
Well, yeah, so you know, it's, that's, that's one way of looking at it. But I think another way of looking at it is that, is that. You're going to have to do some things to to kind of do your due diligence on on where limited amount of growth can be accommodated inside the city. But I think you're, a lot of this is going to be about making the case for for and building that, you know, that it's, it does take a while, like Todd said, to. Do the analysis on a U G A expansion, urban growth area expansion. But a lot of this is going to be doing the things that are within the city's control, given your constraints. And then identifying, you know, maybe as part of this, like, you know. do a little bit of preliminary scoping on, you know, what, what types of information you're going to need to know to potentially do a UGA expansion after the next, after your comprehensive plan update. So it's that, that's, that's a level of, you know, a level of pain and discomfort that I don't think, like, they're going to have to go through that, that process eventually. But part of this is an opportunity to, to find out how to kind of tee up those, those issues and build the record for why, why and how much expansion might be needed. One thing that we did talk about with, with staff, you know, potentially part of this is they have done some GIS work, some, some geospatial stuff, trying to figure out just ownership wise, what in the UGA is truly, does truly represent capacity? And that'll help give us an idea of, you know, if we are going to, you know, scope that out, you know, how much growth could you get there? And then, so then how much change would you have to make within the, the current city boundaries to, to kind of, to, to meet that level of, of, of growth? And, you know, a lot of this, frankly, with the, with the requirements from commerce and the requirements of planning for, for these housing targets and employment targets is that there's no, you know, these targets are, they're, they're, they're important, but they're also, there's also not, it's not like you're gonna lose out on anything substantive as long as you've done all that really is within your power to try to accommodate it. Not every community is going to grow as much as its growth target. Many communities will grow more than their growth target over the next 20 years. And there's some things that you can do that are within your control to try and, to try and manage that. But in the end, if you aren't able to meet that target despite doing, you know, to building the record of, we've done all these things, we've, you know, expanded the UGA, we've, you know, we've, or we've initiated UGA expansions, we've, you know, we've, we've annexed, we've done all this work, you know, if, if you're not quite there at the end of the planning period, if you can demonstrate that you've done all that you can do, you know, that, that limits your, your exposure to appeal. So a lot of this is just about building the record and, and showing that we've, you've done the homework and you've done as much as you can do, given your, given your constraints.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Now, Commissioner Leibert, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
So I, I did want to ask, the 14.5 acres, does that include the mill site?
I'm not sure.
Okay, that's one question. Second question, we recently completed Panorama Apartments, which was correctly wrong, a 90-unit place. Do we know how many acres that occupied? It was multi-story, 90 units? Staff, can you help me out?
Yeah, it'll give me a second and I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can find that on the i, iMap.
Yeah, because I, I think that would be a good proxy for what a higher density would look like. And I'm very curious as to how many acres we used, because that included parking and everything. And something not annexed, like what were called Snoqualmie West would not, would definitely not be included in these 14.5 acres. True?
Right.
Okay. So it could be in the UGA, it's just not annexed into the city. All right. And, and you mentioned us with Carnation. Are you collaborating with the other group that's doing the North Bend and Duval?
Yes, we've, yeah.
That's the same group, right?
So the, this is a, this is a bit of a unique housing action plan because it's a, it's a regional housing needs assessment, but each community is doing its own individual housing action plan using that sort of common set of, of, of data. So FCS did the housing needs assessment for all four communities. And then LDC is working with Snoqualmie and Carnation on their individual housing action plans, which is where you take the information from the HNA and you do some additional engagement and then come up with, you know, these, these actions the city can take. And those really need to be individual because they're tailored to the circumstances of each community. You know, you've got you, 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 Incarnation and North Bend and Duval have very different, you know, planning and building environments, even though you're all kind of in the same general housing market. And so, so, you know, we're, it was really important to not, to not try to make, you know, one size fit all with all these.
I wasn't, wasn't doing that. I was more thinking, we've recently built Panorama, and I think it'd be real good to know the specs on that.
Yeah.
Code.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's 191 units. Four, four stories and it covers approximately nine acres.
Nine, well, nine acres. Okay, so 191 units. 191 units. Four stories, nine acres. The reason I bring that up is that, that is something that I believe worked in terms of getting relatively, you know, relatively reasonable dwelling cost in the city of Snoqualmie. I know that North Bend has recently completed a lot of what looks like apartment complexes around its post office. And I'm just curious on data, what was recently built that is anywhere close to a medium, high or a higher density capacity and what it took to go do that. So I just, just encourage us to pay attention to what we've recently done, because we definitely made some efforts in this case. In our case, Snoqualmie was Panorama. So.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
So if 191 units at, in nine acres, so it's 21 units per acre, that's still low density, right?
You're right, it is low.
Why? Medium.
Okay. What did we do there that caused that? I mean, does that sound like it was four stories? Like, everything that you expressed is high density, but we still seem to get medium.
I guess a good point. I, yeah, I guess very good point.
It could be, you know, there could be stuff in code, you know, it could be parking requirements, could be open space requirements, there could have been dedications involved to, you know, to a utility, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where exactly it is, but there's always critical areas, there's high voltage transmission lines, there's a variety of things.
I think my recollection too is that a lot of them are larger units, many, you know, three, four bedroom as well. So obviously that, that takes up quite a bit of space too compared to studios and one bedrooms.
Yeah, that's interesting. That is interesting. And it takes nine acres, yeah.
I will, I will add though, but the, there's a difference between the zoned net potential capacity and what the market will deliver. And, and so really what the county is trying to say is, you know, are you allowing higher density units based on your zoning and your code? And the answer is yes, you, you probably do allow those, those sites to be built out of higher density, but the market, the developer, developers not delivering that.
Well, yeah, Chair, if I could just add in, I mean, half the city is in a mixed use zone in, under a development agreement. Another, I don't know, I'd say 40%, 35% is in open space. Another 20% roughly is in constrained residential. We're just down to almost no, nothing, you know, until we look at the PAA.
Right.
Planning, annexation area. So these, these areas are, are not broad and, and there's not that vast amount of land that we could really reasonably assume could, could be, you know, contain high density residential.
Right, right. Well, the reason I brought up Panorama is it was hotly discussed, it was intensely discussed as to, did we really want something four story? Do we really want something that dense? And as it turns out, it wasn't that dense to begin with. And, okay, and I, I would like an answer, and it can be after this, on if the mill site's included at 14.5 acres, if it's not, what are, what are the total acres with the mill site? Okay.
Yes, we can look into that and get back to you.
Okay. Good. I, I think it's a good start and it definitely shows the challenge that we have. So I appreciate the, the work done in the presentation. Any other comments, questions for commissioners? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to the next agenda item. The site plan review code amendment. Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me see if I can bring this up. Okay, so, hello. Planning Commissioners, my name is Emily Orteche, the Community Development Director. I'm filling in for Jason Rogers today, who is unable to attend this meeting. He's out sick today. So Jason put together a code, a set of draft code amendments, and this was something we had talked about in front of the commission back in September, September 6, 2022, regarding the establishment of a site plan permitting process. And I think at that time, we kind of explained that a site plan is a graphic representation of all existing and proposed improvements to a site. And sometimes called a plot plan, the site plan functions as a map for development incorporating all landscaping, construction, paving, utilities, signage, things like that. So I do have with me today Bob Sterbank, the city attorney, who will be able to provide some additional input to the draft amendments that you see before you. These amendments start with two, two sections, 1430020, and then move on to Snoqualmie Municipal Code 1780. Admittedly, the staff struggled a little bit with finding the right place to put these code amendments, trying to find a place that was broad enough and not limiting. And many of the zones that we have are, are quite limiting, just to, you know, for example, the, the mill site, the PCI zone, or just getting into commercial. We, we landed on 1780, the design review, knowing that not all design review requires a site plan and not all site plan requires a design review. And in order to fit it into this particular section, and, and we're still, it's, it's still open to a little bit of discussion if we can find a better place, we had to do some rewording of, of some of the existing language. And so for that reason, you see here, you know, 1780020 membership changed to Design Review Board, scope of authority with a dash, Design Review Board. And then we've added in under 1780, the actual terminology for a site plan permit. But before I go diving more into 1780, I wanted to just go back up to this original section here, 1430020. And staff felt it was imperative to go ahead and, and for, for clarity and enhancement purposes, identify all the city's existing permits and make it very clear what categories they fall under. So that's why you see this new section D, permits shall be considered under the following categories. And site plan is listed. Let's see, where did site plan go? I don't, I don't actually see the site plan permit listed here, which may have been an oversight, but we can get that corrected.
What are you looking for? There is a building site.
Yeah.
Improvement plan, is there?
Finding site improvement plan is different than a site plan permit. So I, I don't see the site plan permit listed in here as a category. It should, it should be there, is what I'm saying. But the site plan permit is established under a new section, 1780035, Site Plan Permit, which establishes the thresholds for what would, when such a permit would be required. And in the, in the case of the city of Snoqualmie, there's simply nothing that, that comes before an actual clear and grade permit. So it, and clear and grade permits have different requirements on what, you know, what needs to be submitted, and they clearly don't include all of the items that I listed before. You know, the, the graphical representation of the entire site and everything that would be on it. So this is an opportunity for us to catch, catch applicants early and get them off to the right track with, you know, what it is that we are able to permit and allow them to move down the permit process, whether that be a cleared and grade permit or a building permit or another permit that would ultimately get them to completion of their project. So then we have application requirements. And then site plan review criteria. And then action, then some small additional changes on action for the Design Review Board or Director. And if you looked at your inboxes before this meeting, you should have seen another table sent out to you. And I'll just bring that up. Our senior planner, Diner Reed, put together the changes in a table-like format. Let me just stop sharing and reshare that document. So if you, if you saw this in your inboxes later this afternoon, you'll see these changes represented here in this table-like format where you get the actual Snoqualmie Municipal Code and then, then the proposed amendment. And then there's an explanation if it was a clarification, a simplification or enhancement. And then some additional notes there describing, further describing the proposed action.
I like that. I like that list.
So before we go down two more, too farther, too farther much down into discussion of this, I, I should say that while these amendments were being drafted, they were also being reviewed by our legal department, and that is why our city attorney, Bob Sterbank, is here. He had some additional thoughts that the Planning Commission should consider before we finalize these changes and, and move them on to a public hearing. Bob, would now be a good time for you to share your thoughts on?
Sure. Did you want to walk through the 1780 changes, just generally what's there and?
Sure. So 1780 is the Design Review Section of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code. I mean, it goes into purpose and objectives, the establishment of the board, the scope and the authority of the board, and we introduce the new Site Plan Permit, which, you know, arguably could be housed in a number of different locations. It just seemed apparent from staff that this would be the most neutral location for it. Application requirements, Design Review Guidelines, and then the Site Plan Review Guidelines, which would be a new section. And then some slight modifications from the, the actions of the Design Review Board or Director. And we could go through the, these individually if you'd like, or happy to just answer any questions as the, the changes are pretty self-explanatory. What, what would you prefer?
Well, why don't you just, just zip through the, the red, the additions?
Okay, and under purpose and objectives, some slight modifications here, you know, provide for the review of the, for public officials. And Bob will have some additional comments as it relates to some of this language in public health and safety and welfare, welfare, as that might be more closely aligned to goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Encourage the design of development that's creative and harmonious. And then, you know, we, we tried to add and embellish this a bit more by embody good design principles that will result in high quality development of this, of the, of the development on the subject property. Review for proposal for compliance with the provisions of this code, and then ensure that all the proposal is coordinated in a reasonable and appropriate with other known or anticipated development. So there's, we, we definitely want to make sure that, you know, the actions that are taken are, you know, are harmonious, and that word comes up again, you know, through this purpose and objectives. It's just a slight It's just a slight modification here, you know, you know, for, for an enhancement, Design Review Board instead of membership, there is hereby created a Design Review Board. And then the scoping of authority.
Excuse me, could you go back up? So do you need both those sentences there in black? It looks like the same thing. Design Review Board check consists of the members of the planning commission. Where's the client question? She'll also sit as members of Design Review Board. I think you need one or the other of those sentences, but not both of them.
Sure, we, we could, we could even simplify it a little bit further here and just remove some excess.
Yeah, I think the last sentence in black is unnecessary.
Okay, this, this sentence right here.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, and we like that. We like to simplify. The scoping of authority. The Design Review Board to review the proposed development plans for the following described land use actions. And so here we, we've, we've kind of parsed it out. Instead of keeping it together as one sentence, you'll see an A, you see the ABC to make the, these items pop a little bit more. So single-family homes, any proposed development which for historic design review is required, unless Design Review Board is sitting as the Historic Design Review Board. And then we've got the expansion model or alteration of any building or structure by less than 10% of its existing floor area or overall size in case where floor area standards are not applicable, provided that the proposed design is generally consistent with the existing design as determined by the director. So these were, these are the exclusions again. So just allowing a little bit of administrative review on things that would fall, you know, by less than 10%, still generally consistent with the, with the design. Now we're getting into the site plan permit itself. Again, the Community Development Director shall review proposed site plans for the following. You know, and these would be, when, when would a site plan permit be essentially triggered or required? You know, so then we're saying, hey, new construction of non-residential buildings or other structures, the expansion, remodel, alterations of any building or other structure by more than 10%. So that refers back up to the less than 10% is the exclusion. The expansion of any building or structure that creates a new dwelling unit. A change of use where traffic, parking noise, or other impacts are greater than the impacts of the previous existing use. The construction or, and reconstruction of driveway approaches, gates, roads, shared access facilities, alleys, driving surfaces with ingress and egress. We're looking for opportunities where it makes sense, sense for us to look at a site plan and, and have them go through that process. Now we're moving on to 1780040, application requirements. This is just an enhancement of what already existed, applications for design review or site plan review. So we've inserted appropriately the provisions for site plan. And under this chapter must be submitted to the Community Development Director prior or concurrently with a building permit application, but in no case less than two weeks prior to the meeting of the Design Review Board. Under Design Review Guidelines, you see just minimal changes. Is it? I guess we're just talking about right here. Adding the word "design" in front of "review guidelines." And then the site plan review criteria. You know, lot-based standards are typically applied to each individual lot within a site. However, the director may approve an application for site plan review where such standards have been applied to the site as if it consisted of one parcel, the director may approve an application of our site plan review. It's consistent with the following criteria. Consistent with this comprehensive plan, consistent with all applicable provisions of this title, consistent with the public health and safety and welfare, the street and utilities, the proposed access to the subject property, traffic impacts.
And Emily, can you stop there?
Sure.
Here's a, maybe a good place for me to jump in with some comments and good evening, Mr. Chair, and to those of you in the planning commission, I know it's, it's been a while. It's good to see you again, those whom I don't know. I'm Bob Sterbank, I'm the city attorney. I have been here for about nine years, so now coming up in another week or so. So I have a fair amount of background with some of the application of the existing master plan related code sections and how some of the things have been borne out. And this is a helpful, I think, code process or land use permit to apply a site plan. It fills a, a gap where sometimes we see things go through a binding site plan improvement plan process or subdivision and then jump straight to a building permit. And there isn't a pause in between for consideration of some of these finer-grain details that Emily was just going through.
Yeah.
I think it's 05, 055, right? So many of the, the things that are spelled out in this 1780055 are good and helpful, and I think the planners can apply pretty readily. There are some changes I would suggest that the commission and staff make here and, and take a few things out. One is that first, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan criteria. Now you might think, well, of course it should be. But the reason for taking that out here is that the comp plan, as you all know, comes out of the, the Growth Management Act. And the GMA prescribes what the, the Growth Board and the courts refer to as an iterative or a layered planning process. And so we start first with the comp plan and the map. And that map prescribes what uses go where and identifies the commercial and mixed-use zones. And then the zoning map has to be consistent with that. And the zoning development regulations have to be consistent with the comp plan. That said, the, our courts have, have said several times that under that model, we don't use the comprehensive plan as a permitting tool. And it's not written in a prescriptive way that has specific sections that are clearly identi- applicable in certain circumstances. And so we do have some places where there are master plan type approvals, similar to, for example, the mill site or some of the, the mixed-use final plan approvals that the city used to process Snoqualmie Ridge, where you're at that higher level where there's a look back to the comprehensive plan. But for something like this, like a site plan where you would apply these criteria to a specific project on a specific previously created lot for which commercial uses were already identified, consistent with the zoning map and consistent with the comp plan, you'd be really doubling back on yourself and creating potential confusion for the applicant and any project opponents. And, and a lot of ground for argument about how to apply objectives and principles and policies from a comp plan to a specific application. So I think that the layered iterative GMA planning process already bakes comp plan consistency in here. And I'd suggest you take it out as a site plan, separate site plan review criteria. Same thing is true with that criteria in subsection C, that generalized, consistent with public health, safety and welfare. That's an overall policy or purpose of the code. I think you saw that in that 010 section. That's the type of open-ended criteria that is used for conditional use permits where you've got something that you're not sure is permitted. It might be an outlier depending on various things. And so you have this checklist of criteria and then more generalized things that the hearing examiner can apply. It, it's not really needed or appropriate in, again, someplace where you've already identified these specific uses. And you, you have a consistency with use requirements already baked in and, and be subsection one there where the applicant's got to demonstrate consistency with the use standards. So again, you're doubling, doubling things up and creating ambiguity and fertile ground for applicants and opponents to argue and litigation going through the, to the council and then beyond. So those things, I think you're, you're probably better off taking out. And then with that said, I think the other criteria here, your access, streets and utilities, those are the, you know, types of nitty-gritty, specific things that you want to look at, traffic, safety impacts. Those can come out of the SEPA process as well, but you've got that here. So those are my comments for these site plan review criteria. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments if.
Would it summarize, you want, you think A and C are unnecessary and could even cause confusion and should be removed?
Correct.
And the rest of it, D and F, you were fine with?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I, I see your point in both those cases. Staff, any, any comments to the commissioners? Yeah, then, yeah, why don't we go ahead and strike those two out? And I actually think it will be a much more implementable, implementable criteria.
And Bob, you, there was a, a welfare listed up here as well. Did you see that?
Oh, in that opening section, I think as a purpose, general purpose of the, an objective of the code for this chapter, I think it's fine to say.
Okay. Good. And how much, how much was left? Was that it? Oh, that's it? Okay.
And you had another edit, did you want, you wanted to strike this sentence up here?
We are right there, right there. And point of 20, that, that second sentence is utterly redundant. Yeah.
The technical term for that, I think, is redundantly repetitive.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Now, there's so much we could do with this code and many sections of these codes. I mean, they, they've literally been untouched for decades.
But I think it's going to shape up. Now, for everybody, the planning or the timeline on this is that on the next meeting, which is December, right? Because we're gonna, we'll talk about it, but from a scheduling standpoint, we're gonna skip, probably skip the 21st due to Thanksgiving and meet December 5th. That would be the public hearing for this, for this and what we covered last time. Is that accurate?
I think it's whatever the, the commission would like to do. I, I think at one point we did talk about the 21st, but that is the week of Thanksgiving, so happy to do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah. So December 5th, we would come back for a public hearing?
Well, this, what's the other that we're lumping in with this? What was that called?
We have the historic design review.
Historic design review and then the site plan. Those two, we wanted to have a public, because we reviewed the other one at last meeting. We wanted to have a public hearing on both of those and then provide a recommendation to the council at the following meeting. So if we meet the 21st, that would be the public hearing. Then the fifth would provide a recommendation to the council. I actually think that's what we talked about, yeah. If that works out. Okay, any more comments on the site plan review? Okay, why don't we make those changes and line up on, on the public hearing at our next meeting?
Okay.
I've got a kind of a nudge with the agenda that we've got. I really want to cover the those customized version of the short course that was for this planning commission. And at least those, you know, those 20, 30 minutes we think are most useful. However, two people that I really wanted to be there, one was Commissioner Aleph, who is out today. And the second one is Commissioner Mather, who is also out today. And everybody present today actually sat through that, that time. And I don't think it would hurt for repetitiveness, but I didn't want to, I don't want to miss those two. So what I'd like to do is pump that to the next meeting in hopes that we get Commissioner Aleph and Mather in the meeting. Because I'd really like them there if we're gonna review that 20 or 30-minute course segment.
Do, do we know for sure that their city email addresses are working correctly?
No, I'm gonna send them some individual emails prior to the next meeting to make sure they're there. I didn't do that this time, and I'm kicking myself, I wish I would have. Anyway, I wish I would have. But again, everybody on this call and the commissioners saw that original short course. And again, I don't think it would hurt to see it again. I really want Commissioner Aleph and Mather to be there. So I'd like to postpone that agenda item when I was watching the attendance and thinking about that to the next, to the next planned meeting.
Okay, that sounds fine. We can move that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll start that short course with Joe Tovar, who speaks directly to the planning commissioners specifically on, on their, on your job duties and responsibilities.
Yeah, and, and it was, it was good. Again, I think everybody could hear it, but I really want those two guys to hear it. Any, any concern about that? Okay, we'll go ahead and move that over. And do we still have everybody here? Did we lose anybody?
One, two.
It's like we lost Commissioner Testman?
Yeah, we lost our vice chair.
Yeah, he's over in the attendee list.
Yeah. Is he in the attendee list? I don't see him. Well, he's got his hand up.
Yeah, this guy's hand raised.
Yeah, can we promote? Can we promote Commissioner Testman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Testman?
Yes.
I don't know what happened there.
I do apologize, Commissioner. Go through.
Vice Chair Testman. Was your hand up wanting to come in or did you have additional comments of what we just covered?
Well, I am hitting the promote panelist.
We see him there now.
And I don't know why he's not, doesn't appear to be going to the panelist, to a panelist. Bob, do you know why?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I have no control at all on that. Well, what you, oh, we do have a quorum, but try, try again. Because he was kind of hanging up in our.
I do, I mean, I am trying to click the allow to talk button. And I don't know why that doesn't seem to be helping me. So I'm hitting allow to talk.
Good, or legal representative troubleshooting IT, I think you guys are a little understaffed there.
We, we did lose a senior planner. She'll be departing this week and we are down our associate planner temporarily. And of course, Jason is the senior planner, he's out sick, so we're doing the best we can.
We're lean and mean.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I, I can't, wait, there he is, he's coming in. Vice Chair Testman, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry, my internet is very unstable right now, so it keeps kicking me in and out.
Okay, did you have any?
I'm sorry.
Did you have any comments of our most recent discussion?
No, I, I heard it totally makes sense on the training. So I get moving that to another session.
Okay, then with that, let's move on to for training, short course. Oh, I just talked about that. Upcoming schedule, number five, planning commission plan schedule?
Sure, I, I can bring that up.
And while she's calling that up, I think the real question, we, we had a, just a brief pre-meeting, myself and staff discussing, does November 21st work in some years that has and some years that hasn't? It's the Monday before Thanksgiving. So while she's bringing that up, just let me pull the commissioners present. Commissioner Smith, does that work for you?
Yep, yeah, I'm not going anywhere for Thanksgiving.
Okay, Commissioner Goodman?
That would work for me.
Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Vice Chair Testman?
I'll be present, Chair.
Outstanding, okay then, we are on for November twenty first. And that that lines it up very nice, then as presented here, we can do. The combined historic design review procedures and slight plan review, which we just covered. And have the public hearing on that on the twenty first and then have the recommendation for the council on December fifth. Good. Good. So do you want me to cover this?
Yeah, sure, we could be a tag team. This is still a work in progress, this is the. The draft future agendas list for the planning commission, so again. We have a initial column over here with the task, and then we've projected what what is anticipated to happen with that task as we move along through the calendar. The the key to the code is down here for this beige is is a discussion item and then an action item. So for the next meeting, we've we've projected. To have the two code amendments that we just discussed. As a public hearing and also colored beige as as a discussion and then moving them to the action items on December fifth. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes good sense.
I I should also point out that there is the opportunity to do that PSRC training from the eleven fourteen council meeting. If if time allows and we would be doubling up a little bit, moving this. Short course segment. To over here as well, so the two training.
Right, now. I mean, let's talk a bit about PSRC presentation to city council, so that's going to be. Actual trained to them. From the Puget Sound, what's it, the RC Regional Council?
Yeah, Puget Sound Regional Council, yeah, they they are presenting to the the city council on the fourteenth.
And what are they presenting?
They're presenting their. Their growth plan twenty fifty, so you know, they'll be giving high level presentation of GMA. And you know, the Puget Sound Regional Council's growth plan and how that fits into a local comprehensive planning.
Yeah, and you thought that would take what thirty minutes or?
That's probably going to be about a twenty minute presentation.
Yeah, so the thought here was that we get the short course, the Joe Tovar segment. For the planning commissioners, but and and in particular those two that that were present when we had the first short course. And that we also listened to the twenty minute presentation. From the Puget Sound Regional Council as recorded to city council from November fourteen. We can do that in the planning commission, just because I know everybody's time is tight, and I thought it'd be good if we schedule that there. If you want to not do that and just log into the live stream of the city council. You would get that same information, but I thought it was good, since we are all meeting. Every other week that we at least flag that we can go ahead and do that. And and I think it makes sense, I mean, what are your, what are your thoughts? Any thoughts, Commissioner Smith?
No, makes sense.
Okay. All right. And then on. The beginning of. The meeting on the twenty first, we're going to have our comprehensive plan review introduction. Now, do you want to talk a bit about that?
Yeah, that we we do need to do more of an overall, you know, broad. Brace, broad based brush at what it what's going to be involved with the comprehensive plan update. Admittedly, staff is still working through the details of that, we're still putting together consultant team, we're still working on our periodic review checklist. But I think it's still appropriate to to, you know, as we're doing this training, especially PSRC. That we keep in mind the overall goal and the timeframe that's involved, so. Hopefully, on the twenty first, we could put together a timeframe, you know, like a a line chart. Or line timeframe to show you, you know, how long the process is going to take, what elements are going to be updated. And and some other general information about how we're going to accomplish it. You did hear from FCS and LCD today about the housing element and. That's just one of many elements of the comprehensive plan that we'll be embarking on up until the time of adoption in December of twenty twenty four.
Okay, and then December fifth?
Yeah, December fifth, we we would have a follow up. Todd mentioned that Clay from LDC would be. Coming along with, you know, update to the housing strategy plan as well as the housing goals and policies. And so you'll have another presentation on housing, this is the the happy grant component of this work on December fifth.
Yeah, and just to comment, one of the reasons why I brought up panorama is. I remember, and I know Commissioner Smith remembers, there was intense discussion. About did we really want something for stories there and did we really want something with that density there? And I mean, it was, you you know, it was a lot of discussion, a lot of hand wringing. And we thought we had done something that was genuinely. You know, pretty dead, so it's just kind of a a surprise to find out, it was a surprise to people that that it covered nine acres. And. It it's anyways, that's why I brought that up, I think it's important to understand what we attempted to do there and what we succeeded and. Where we came up short, because when they're talking genuine high density. I don't think we have a full understanding what that would even look like, if it could look like anything, so. Yeah. Okay. And then. We're asking DRB, I'm sorry, Gear Auto to come back to talk about their colors after their presentation in. October seventeenth with the bright green, so I think that's good. Good.
Yeah, I'll I'll double check about Gear Auto and making sure that. They are anticipating coming back at that time. Diana Reed, our senior planner, was managing that project, and she'll be leaving that as of this Wednesday, so.
Okay, so you're the one turning the lights out, sounds like, okay.
Yeah, and locking the door.
You and Bob, yeah, okay.
Bob left.
Wow, it's just you now, wow. Okay. Any comments or questions on the next couple of weeks? We've ascertained everybody's, can we have the twenty first? So go ahead and have, can we schedule the public hearings then for the twenty first?
Yes, yes.
Let's go, let's go and do that. And we'll schedule the PSRC presentation and the short course, so it'll be a relatively long meeting. And we ought to do the public hearing in front of the training, we'll ought to backstop the meeting with the training. And then on December fifth, we'll have recommendations. For the historic design review procedures and the site plan review. And hopefully bring in your auto and have a update with the housing. Now, is anybody open to actually showing up in person on December fifth and having a potluck or something, so we actually get to see each other?
Don't all speak at the same.
Yes, Vice Chair Testament?
Yes, I I wasn't sure if you all could see me, I'm open to that, I'll just tell you, I would love to come more often. But my son's hockey practices are Mondays and Fridays from six fifteen to seven fifteen, so it's just. Really, really hard, but. If you wanted to do something like that on the fifth, you know, I'd certainly work it out.
Okay. Good, I hope he's. Honing his skills with all that practice, good.
I hope so too, I hope so too, he's coming along.
Is he at Snow King?
He is, yeah, yeah.
Staying local, nice.
That's right.
Yeah, that's a great break, Commissioner Smith, does a potluck work for you?
I I would like to do it. On this, the fifth, that's probably getting a little close, so we are, we're heading off. Fourteenth of December for a two week cruise to Antarctica and we're, except for sending the kids to school masked, we're pretty much locking down after Thanksgiving. So that we don't get sick before the cruise and we still have to test to get on it. So I probably would not be able to join in person.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Goodman?
I really like the idea, my my childcare responsibilities is are gonna make it difficult unfortunately.
Okay, okay. And let me just finish up, Commissioner Lambert, you still there?
Yeah, so that means that I. Wouldn't be sitting at that table all by myself.
Well, it sounds like you, me and Andre would probably be there at at that point, actually, Commissioner Goodman said he'll try to make it, but. Commissioner Smith is going to be in lockdown.
I I've changed my mind, I'd like to go to Antarctica.
Well, well, let's let's see, let's see what we can. Say what, guys, think about it, I mean, I think it'd be good to do some more in person meetings. I know the council's been doing that for a while, I don't think, I think we're effective, but I I think it would be good to do an event. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but think about it and let's set that space on that point again on our next meeting.
And I'm I'm game if you want to do it in the new year, for sure.
Okay, oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm not doing that sick.
New year as well, okay. As well, or maybe that'll be the one. All right. Okay, so that covers everything we've got in the agenda, let me do a round table for the items of planning commissioner interest. So. Commissioner Goodman, any item of interest?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
No, I don't have any new items, I think that was a that was a really interesting presentation. You know, the the UGA expansion, I think is an interesting topic, it's one that, you know, I know we went down that road. Maybe it was before your time, but we did go down it in the past and, you know, ran into a lot of resistance. From the powers that be in the past, I'd be curious to see, you know, as as this process moves along, how that all kind of plays out.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you referred to Snoqualmie Hills West conversation? Yeah, I I was here for that.
Oh, no, so it was before that even, like, looking to annex the portions down closer to the I ninety interchange, when there had previously been talk about doing like a. Like a metro bus station down there, you know, or other commercial developments as well, and there were multiple attempts to. Annex or to add that to the UGA, excuse me, unsuccessfully.
I see, okay. Yeah. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Smith?
That's it.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah, the two businesses that were supposed to open in downtown Snoqualmie, the restaurant and then the little clothing shop. Jason was gonna find some more information about them because they haven't opened, is there any update on those?
That's a question.
That is a good question, I do not have the update on that, I did bring it up just the other day. How about we we find the answer to that and send out an email to the group, to the to the commission on that, would that be okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, Vice Chair Testman?
No, nothing on my end, I appreciate it.
Okay. No, good, I just do want to just reiterate that, let's please find out if that fourteen point five acres. Includes the mill site and because that's that's a pretty key piece of information. So other than that, I'm I'm fine. Okay. All right, with that, I move that we adjourn planning commission at. Right now. And what is it, nine oh one at November seventh, two thousand twenty two, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Steph, I know you guys are under. Underpersoned, under manned, I was gonna say. Yeah, at any rate, appreciate your work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Everyone, bye.
Good night, all.